I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Town Meeting for July 12, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Sponholz.
I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start out with some this evening's announcements. First of all, I want to let everyone know that the Outdoor Fitness Clinic will be July 17 from 8:00 to 10:00. And UPMC Center for Rehabilitation and Sports Medicine will be conducting that clinic. There will be a warm-up and proper demonstration of proper use of the equipment at our fitness court. And there will also be flexibility and stability screening and snacks and water. So I think that's going to be a very nice event. The Heritage Center is putting on a program, The History of Radio. That's July 15 at 7:00 PM. And Jim Howler is going to be conducting that presentation. The McCandless Police Department is sponsoring their first National Night Out. That is going to be August 3, 5 till 8:00 PM. That's going to be a town hall with the purpose to enhance partnership with first responders. If you're unable to attend, or if you are able to attend, you can show your support for first responders that evening by turning on your porch light. There will be safety checks for kids' bikes and helmets, free hot dogs and giveaways. Bob FM will be there and at dusk, there will be a movie in the park. You may notice things being a little different this evening. We are trying out a new format, a meeting format, trying to streamline, cut out some of the repetition as things have changed over the years and better organize our meetings. It should help citizens be able to more easily target which meetings are where their interests are so that they will know when to attend, also be more respectful of our staff's time. All right, we have a couple of awards this evening. This is one of my favorite things, my favorite parts. Could I please have Ms. Dawn Miller, please come forward?
Stand here facing this way, so how we figure it out at work. Okay. Right. Ms. Dawn Miller has been nominated for our Citizen Recognition Award. Dawn is a member of the litter subcommittee. She and her family participate in the spring and fall town litter cleanups. Dawn also helps helped write the temporary sign ordinance as another way of helping to keep our community clean and beautiful. Dawn helped to organize and is a member of the Northern Area Environmental Council and serves as a Penn State Extension Master Watershed Stuart Coordinator. So it is with great pleasure, Dawn, and I've had just the privilege of knowing you some in the EAC to present this award to you that says, "This word is proudly presented to Dawn Miller in recognition of your commitment and passion for keeping the town beautiful and litter-free, as well as for assisting with the development of its sign ordinance and many other projects."
Would you please open up the audio and visual for our junior council member? Oh, your mic is still off. So Raj, I'm glad you could make it this evening. We, it is the end of your term, two terms, in fact, as our junior council member. You didn't get enough with one that you applied twice. So it must not have been too arduous. We wanted to give you a letter of accommodation so that you have something in appreciation for the work that you have done for the Town of McCandless to carry with you on wherever life takes you in the future. So this will be given to you. But first of all, I want to tell everyone that you've not only come to the meetings and given us your ideas and summarized the things that have the topics that have come before council, but you actually brought your own unique ideas, which is why we, one of the reasons that we want to get youth, younger people involved in in our meetings. Your ideas involve the beginning an Instagram account, which you've been helping manage with, I think John Burchowski is helping you. It's so that this is the first time the town has ever had that, to try to identify and reach out to some younger members of our community, as well as the tennis clinic that you're currently organizing because you're a big tennis player on our soon-to-be freshly refinished tennis courts down here behind the town hall, as well as the blood drive that is going to be occurring in Lexington. So let me read to you your letter of commendation. It says, "Dear Mr. Gindy, the Town of McCandless would like to recognize you for your consistent effort and hard work as the Town of McCandless Junior Councilmember for the years 2021," and we can add 19 to 20 in there also. "You have been a valued partner to both Town Council and Town Administration. You have prepared insightful monthly reports for Town Council and have led valuable perspective of young adults to the governance of our town. During your time in this role, you have led many innovative community-building initiatives, such as a blood drive, the town Instagram account, and a planned tennis clinic for novice players. You have achieved in your, in your two years as junior council member, what all who serve in government hope to. You have made a difference in your community. On behalf of Town Council, the staff, and all citizens of McCandless, we wish you well in your future endeavors. We know you'll be successful in your attempts." Either mail this to you or work out.
Sometime, no problem.
Okay. Is there anything you want to say?
I, yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone. It's been a heck of a year, especially with the pandemic and, you know, so much change. But it's definitely been one memorable, especially for me, and getting to know all of you has been awesome. You guys are great people. I just would like you, would like to thank you to be part of this awesome community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all that we have for announcements today. Next is, council members have the minutes for the meeting of June 28, 2021. Were there any changes or amendments to the, to these minutes? I had a change on page five. I would like the, probably halfway down the page, everything after stated. And I can write this up. It was a statement that was documented by me that was incorrectly stated. I'd like to have that taken off the record, taken out of the minutes. Minutes are really supposed to be an official record of actions and attendees. And direct statements can be misunderstood because they're just little snippets of them. So that, and that isn't even what the statement was. So I'd like to have that taken out completely. Yes, everything after stated can come out. And if you, either the whole thing can be left out, or if you wanted to add a better representation of actually what was said was, or what I said was, "Support a public education program on the hazards of Koltar," instead of legislation. Thank you. Were there any other changes?
Senator President.
Councilmember Woods.
On that same topic, there was a motion made by Councilmember Sponholz. I made the second to adopt the resolution. It's not listed in the minutes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended? So moved. Hey, Councilmember Sponholz, let's make a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Smith. There's been a motion, a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And if our members who are, which, or the majority of our members who are participating by Zoom, if you please would just raise your hand, it's just so hard to decipher your voices. So I can make sure that everything is accurate. I do want everyone to know that we have a full complement of council here in attending this meeting. Several people on vacation, but just not, their bodies are not here, but they are here. All right, so that passed unanimously. All right, the next, we have a public hearing on the firefighter's real estate tax credit.
I'd be happy to. I also wanted to mention that if anybody who is presently publicly speaking, anybody via Zoom who wants to speak to this, please enter your name and address in the chat box so that we can be aware of your desire to speak. Council's been discussing this topic for a number of months. We have received requests over time for consideration of some additional volunteer credits for those members of Volunteer Fire Service who are no longer employed but still active in their various companies. For those of you in attendance that aren't aware, the town does offer a credit on earned income tax to volunteers who meet criteria for service. And the intent of this ordinance is to provide also a real estate tax credit for those members of the service who are not employed, any long, retired. So the maximum credit that a volunteer could receive under this part of the program will be $300. Credit that back, paid back as a refund in their real estate tax. Otherwise, it will be hidden. The criteria remains the same for real estate taxes it did for earnings. So they still have to meet the number of hours of service in order to get this. Questions from council?
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak from the public on this matter? If you have public comment about everything else, that will be after this public hearing. But if anyone who wants to speak about this particular issue, this is the time. So if you want to speak.
No, you mean the firefighters?
Yes.
No, no.
Okay. General comment will be after this public hearing of this is over. Just wanted to make sure. Is there?
I believe that they deserve everything they get.
If you would like to come up to, you're just throwing it in free, just a bonus comment there. Is there anyone who is here by Zoom that has signed up in the chat box that would like to make a comment? All right, I'm going to ask again, just in case we give somebody some time because it is a public hearing. I wanted to make sure everybody would have time if they wanted to say anything. Any council member that has anything. We were not voting on this tonight. This is a, this is a public hearing to hear for the public's. Again, any public that are present would like to speak. Any members on Zoom? Hearing none, we oppose the public hearing. All right, the public hearing on the firefighter's real estate tax credit. And we'll plan on voting on that next meeting? Yes, 27? Yes, 27. 26, thank you. All right, now, next is public comment on any agenda item or any general comment. All right, please come to the microphone and say your name and your address, please.
My name is Joseph Markham, my school, 99, Catherine Drive, McCandless. You're going to come up with an ordinance tonight to, to actually, which, I don't have a lot of input on it. And normally, for, I've been coming here for 30 years, and any kind of ordinance that ever come up, the public always had a comment at the time as the ordinance was being presented. But seeing the format's been changed, where the public has to speak before they even know what's going on, that's sort of disadvantage to the public. But anyways, that being said, I know the chicken ordinance is what I'm talking about. We live in a township that we digest as one of the best in the United States. It's an R1 for the most part, and now you want to make it a farming community, livestock. It's going to be, and what's the percentage of people? Handful of people who want to raise chickens have no knowledge of it. And the bottom line is, the vast majority of them, they're looking for their property to be nice. And you're bringing in livestock. And, and the question is, like, you know, chickens need daily feeding and all that sort of thing. They make a lot of noise. The roosters crow all the time. Every time a hen lays an egg, the whole bunch, hawks makes all kinds of noise. They are prey to animals, coyotes, foxes, raccoons. We need that coming in the kingdom, huh? Owls, eagles, hawks, and there's a host of other delights, bugs, lice, mites, ticks, worms, a lot of health concerns. It can be destructive machines, destroying everything. Well, that's going to really make our neighborhoods really, you know, really nice. So if somebody wants to purchase or live in McCandless, you know, I mean, we in Butler or Mercer County, backyard chickens are very expensive. You know, the ones in supermarket subsidized by the government, a lot cheaper. You know, there's going to always be neighbors that complains, who's going to take care of them when they're on vacation? Who's going to be the pet sitter? You got to be knowledgeable. Then there's the poop and more poop and so forth. And who's going to inspect this? You know, the code officer doesn't inspect nothing. You're not allowed one dwelling on a property. People got house trailers. How do you get away with that? You know, they have storage places and that's all full of house trailers and boats. McCandless don't do nothing. Got a lady in certain district off Rob's Road puts a toilet on the front of her property. Instead of passing an ordinance about that, worried about chickens. You know, you got to guard your flock day and night. You need a chicken coop. Who's going to inspect this? You don't even inspect nothing now. Fire pitch, you know, Allegheny County is a near pollution county. You don't allow to open burn. You need permission for the fire chief 24 hours prior, but they burn all over the place. Can't open your windows for the smoke. You know, backyard poultry carry harmful germs. If they make a salt, salmonella, the worst can catch that off the feces. In 2017, Washington Post Center for Disease Control and Prevention, 1,120 cases of salmonella linked to backyard chickens. Vaccines, you know, vets ain't going to give vaccines. They give them to commercial because they got a whole bunch. Vets ain't going to take care of chickens in residential area. Who's going to inspect all this stuff? You know, I lived in McCandless for 30 years, and the reason people bought houses in McCandless because it was run on a strict R1. And now you got a small handful of people want to raise chickens because they seen something on the internet that is like, you know, they think, oh, it's cool because they're going to get fresh eggs. They're going to, you know, but my concern is, who's going to enforce all this to help? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments from citizens present?
Yes.
Present? Okay, I see that we have someone signed up in the chat box that would like to speak. Can you give the microphone request?
Good evening, am I on?
You are, we can hear you, yes, please.
Okay, and is my video visible? Yes, it is, okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I was reading over the agenda items and I saw that tonight will be a discussion about limiting the sidewalk having a variance, if that's a correct term, for the development on Thompson Run Road. And as I went down the agenda, I did see the comment by the Gateway Engineers regarding that sidewalk. On the pages are not, oh yeah, page three of four. General comment one. Section B, to waive the requirement for a sidewalk along Thompson Run Road from the site driveway and south. I'm not exactly sure how that would run. But I think that there was already a variance given for that area because of the cemetery and did not want to have a sidewalk on their side of Thompson Run Road. And the reason given there, and as I recall, was that it was too expensive. And now the reasoning is that the topography along the roadway is very steep and no other sidewalks currently exist on the adjoining properties. I feel this is a very weak argument for not installing a sidewalk. As you know, as you might recall, I was part of the Implementable Planning Committee and connectivity was a very important part of the Implementable Plan. And I think it was always stated that, oh, well, we need a sidewalk, we'll, we'll put one in. Well, we need sidewalks. We don't have any on Thompson Run Road as, as far as I know. And I've seen children walking to the pool on Thompson Run Road at McCandless Pool. I see adults walking there. That is a very, that intersection needs to be managed a little bit better as well and sidewalks would really help. So each time a sidewalk is not installed, we, we do run the risk of injury to pedestrians and limiting the connectivity to our community members. So I hope that they, I've seen this over and over again, that the reasoning given is that the topography is limiting. Then I ride through other communities such as Pine Township, and I see hillsides with sidewalks cut in. There is an engineering way to do this. This is a very weak argument. And I think it's time that, as they did over at the Divine Providence Mother House, they find, found a way to do that little path on Babcock Boulevard. So I think we need to raise the bar here and start thinking of our residents. Thank you very much for listening. And I also wanted to comment, I read the police report and I was very impressed with all the items that were listed there that Chief Hock is having the officers take part in. Thank you, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other individuals signed up on Zoom to speak? Okay. All right, then we will move on to reports from committees. And this is where agenda is a little bit different. Under the, the Public Safety Committee, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee will go down and call for these reports. So that would be you, Councilmember Slager.
Okay, first, we have the Chief's Report. I believe Ryan's on here. Does anyone have any questions or anything, comments for Ryan? No questions, no comments? Okay, next, we have Fire Marshal's Report for the month of May 2021 and Permit Report for June 2021. Is Dan there? Any questions?
He's here.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Nope. Next, we have Code Enforcement's Violations Complaint Statistics Report for the month of June 2021. Questions, comments for that?
Um, I, I did have something, I've had a couple of people talk to me about, right now, anyone that has a pool, and I, there's, I saw lots of permits for pools, that's why I'm bringing this up, you know, has to have a fence, right? That's our, but apparently the new pool covers that they have are actually supposed to be safer than fences because you can scale the fences. But once these pool covers close, they say you can even drive a car on them and that they're much safer. So that may be something for us to look at, maybe changing our ordinance. And you flip a switch, like a light switch, and it just goes, it closes over. So the pool is really closed. Plus, it may just look a lot nicer not to have that, you know, that big fence up. But it may be something for us to think about adding. Is, is that something that maybe council would be interested in looking at, seeing about maybe adding something like that to our ordinance? Or at least looking and seeing if that's really true, that it's? Done, everyone?
I think, yeah, I think at the, oh.
I can't tell who's speaking. I think it's no one. Councilmember Smith, are you trying to?
Yeah, that's all I was trying to say was, you know, I'd definitely be interested in hearing more about it. And at the very least, considering it as an alternative to a fence. You know, if, if we decide it's a good idea, it doesn't mean we have to get rid of fences and
Right.
and switch to covers, but offering it as an alternative, as, as something else that pool owners could do in lieu of a fence, you know, particularly, I'd be interested in, in anything like that.
Yeah, and like I said, I've, I've heard they're even safer than fences. So I, it might be worth looking, kind of updating that little section there. Thank you, that was my only comment about permits.
Okay, next up is the Personnel Board. We actually haven't had a meeting since our last update. And I know we're trying to plan one soon, so hopefully there'll be an update for the next meeting or two out. The Volunteer Firefighter Steering Committee, last meeting was May 19. We do not have one scheduled as of now, but we will hopefully have a new date soon. Please Community Engagement Ad-Hoc Committee. Nothing really new since the last time. Ryan, do you have anything to add? I don't know if you'll be able to speak here about this.
Can you hear me, folks?
Yes.
Uh, we just continue, I would remind everyone of National Night Out. We're trying to, we continue to plan it, put things in motion and want it to be a, you know, a success for the, for the town, community members in the police department, other first responders that we hope are there with us that evening, and that's what we're into right now.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes my Public Safety Committee part of the meeting.
So.
Just if it.
Go ahead.
One thing I wanted to do publicly this evening is to thank Dan Stack for his years of service with the town. Did I jump on?
No, no, I was trying to, I was just trying to remember what we called.
Okay. Just like to thank Dan for his service to the town, 27 years, if I got it right. And. You will be missed. And we wish you all the, all the luck in the new position.
Next is Facilities Management, which was a new category that we added before we had five committee. General Committees and now we have six, so that would allow each council member to be in charge. Of a committee, but since we have not. Had this before and since all of the things in here are. You think? Okay, um, Councilmember Woods, would you like to be the Chair of this committee?
I'm honored, Madam President.
Thank you, not to put you on the spot in front of every, I'm sitting here thinking, we didn't assign this.
What's up?
Thank you for stepping up, Councilmember Woods.
My pleasure.
Okay. So to begin the report, we have the Public Works Activity Report, which was included in everybody's packet. If you have any questions, I could see that Mr. Shaneman was in the building today. Just want to point out that the storm cleanup is complete and despite all the extra effort that the Department of Public Works had to put into that paving program is still on target. Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Jeff, I loved all the goals that you sent to council about the direction that you want Public Works to go forward with. I love your vision and direction and I was just impressed over the top with that. So thank you so much, that would, they were really good, really good.
Okay, number two, the Environmental Advisory Committee. Councilwoman Spahnholz?
Thank you. Because we are now changing this agenda, we actually submitted the minutes for the last EAC meeting in the last meeting. So I have nothing new for you today since our, we will be having a meeting on Wednesday night. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Once we get on this cycle, then it will be right, we think.
Okay, very good. Next up is the Technology Advisory Committee and that's me, so you're. The minutes were included in your packets. I'm saying that out loud, now I'm thinking that they were. No, we just had ours last week. We're on the similar schedule as a. EAC, I apologize, we're going to be a little bit behind on that. We did have several applicants. For the open positions and we'll get to that a little bit later this evening. Number four, the Stormwater Management Ad Hoc Committee, again, Councilwoman Spahnholz.
Thank you. We did give an update at the last town council meeting. But I did, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Our automated stormwater issue reporting, I believe, is up and operating on the town website. We obviously know some of the significant areas of repetitive flooding in town. But we are, we want to have an inventory of any areas in the town that are repeatedly experiencing flooding events. And in addition, I just remind everyone, especially in light of the recent storms. That the town continues to preemptively pursue stormwater mitigation projects. Including a potential product, project on donated land on Pine Creek. There are holistic watershed projects with accompanying grant applications, so the North Hills Cog. We are continuing the ongoing efforts to inspect, maintain inventory. And upgrade or make upgrade assessments on the town's stormwater management detention facilities. And we have two upcoming meetings, which I believe Mr. Grimm is going to be a leader in with the Army Corps of Engineers. To look at some of the most significant. Areas of flooding that we've experienced in the town. And those meetings will be held on the fourth of August, followed by a onsite site visit on August 10th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the report for the Facilities Management Committee.
Right Services Committee, then her name is not on there, but that's Councilmember Spahnholz.
The latest information. Was included in the, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm the service. I apologize, Councilmember Smith, would you like to tell us about the sanitary authority?
Sure, the meeting minutes for the most recent meeting are in your packet. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, hearing none. Now I will move to the Ambulance Authority, all of the latest information. From. Was included in council's packet at the last meeting. And again, Councilmember Smith, the Library Authority.
Yep, no new information because of the timing, the information was in the last meeting's packet. So from here on out, it'll, it'll be on schedule, but there's no new information since the, the last meeting.
That concludes the Services Committee Report.
All right. All right, moving on to old business. Council is considering the Ordinance 1514, the Ordinance of McCandless. Amending the Codified Ordinances Part Seven to regulate the keeping of chickens. Now, I, I hope. I want to, either Rob can jump in here or I can try to explain, oh, there's RJ, like magic. RJ, tell everyone why we have two separate things that we're adopting here.
Yeah, so if we take a really, really brief trip down memory lane. Before, several of us were actually here. Yeah, as you say, two years, I think that this has been in the making. And once upon a time, it was paired with a household pets and dog and kennel ordinance. We split those two issues so they could be considered and discussed separately. Subsequently, we were taking a look with, you know, the Newtown Attorney's Office, there are zoning specialists there. And it was determined, originally everything was in zoning ordinance essentially, but there were some regulations such as, you know, the, the sanitary conditions of coop. The aesthetics of it, making sure that all of the materials outside are of good quality and in harmony with the surrounding area. Those things were better suited for the property maintenance and general nuisances. A set of ordinances, which are the 700s Code versus the 1300s, which is zoning. So essentially, we split those, you know, it's, it's still all the same regulations for the most part. But just putting them in the more appropriate buckets for enforcement. The first one that you've got up today is the General Offenses and General Nuisances Code. I can give just a real quick overview of that and some of the discussion of the, the different options that you have for how we do the permitting here. Which should have been in your reading packets. So is that okay? Okay, all right, so. Essentially for this, this first ordinance, you know, this deals mostly, like I said, with more of the health, sanitation, those types of issues. The care of the chickens is that one particular heading, chicken coops and runs, you know, shade and warm weather, adequately fenced, all of those things. Those all go together with those property maintenance issues that could come up with backyard chicken ownership. The first section that I wanted to draw your attention to is the Certificate of Approval section in the current draft. So I think originally when this was being drafted and it's kind of moved through the process this way, there was a suggestion that we do an annual licensing and reinspection of the coops. Depending on whether that's something that the council wants to stick with, there are some different considerations administratively. That we'd have to work out depending on, you know, setting an annual licensing fee, some of the considerations for an annual inspection, all those things. So that's the sheet they had in your packets. Option one, two, and three was essentially discussing the different ways that you could do a coop certificate of approval. And under the section, you'll see an option one, that's sort of as the ordinance is written. That, there are some challenges listed under there, essentially, you know, depending on whether you do these inspections at the same time annually. Or you try to track, you know, exactly when each permit expires annually. There's going to be a different workload of inspections and on staff time that would be, you know, kind of difficult to recoup, I think. With, with a fee that's a little more. Easy to stomach, I would say, annually for the residents. I'm happy to answer any questions about what was in that sheet, but, you know, overall. The second option on there would be suggesting essentially to retain all of those same regulations, but it eliminates some of the administrative challenges. That come with trying to do an annual reinspection that, you know, might not catch some of those issues that we're really concerned about. Because the person that owns the chickens and potentially is violating the ordinances knows that we're coming. I mean, it would probably not be terribly difficult to clean up those violations and, you know, get your renewal. Whereas sort of, if there's a nuisance in the neighborhood, we're probably not going to find out about it just at the annual inspection. That's probably something that's going to get flagged to code enforcement pretty far in advance of that inspection. So just some different information about costs, you know, benefits and cons of each approach, staff time that would be allotted for each approach. Essentially taking a look at either option two or option three in there, with just a couple of quick changes to that certificate of approval section, the ordinance could still move forward. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about how that permitting might work. In advance of the nuisance ordinance vote.
We need to understand that process in order to like move on this motion.
Well, so if, if as it's written, it's adopted, as is, there are some decisions that council needs to make in advance of, you know, updating the fee schedule resolution. For example, we would need to set an annual inspection fee. My suggestion in this is if we do move forward with the annual inspection, that we wouldn't set it at lower than fifty dollars, just because that's actually probably less than the staff time that it would take to administer the inspection annually per permit. Council should probably also give us guidance as to whether they would want the permits to expire on a calendar year basis versus, you know, what day essentially they were approved throughout the year and then individually tracking each of those dates. Again, there's, you know, pros and cons. To each way that, you know, you could do that. I think their current software might have some challenges in tracking the individual dates, but at the same time, if the program's popular. Ballparking maybe about an hour of staff time that could be spent per inspection, you know, we're. If it's a popular program, we're quickly backing up past January just to do those inspections annually with our current staffing. So we would need some sort of indication as to which way council would prefer if we were to move with, forward with the annual inspections. The last consideration on that is, do you want to offer a reduced second year rate if you have somebody apply beyond a certain point in the calendar year? If you were to do the permits all expiring at the same time. Those are just some of the different things that we'd have to figure out in infrastructure to, to track and maintain in the office.
So my, looking at this, the bottom line that I'm hearing is option one is an annual recertification, how are we going to do it? Or option two is an initial certification and no other certification?
Right, that would be just responding to code enforcement complaints.
Okay, okay, so is there anything in between, it would be like maybe a five year?
Well, that's certainly something that, I mean, that would, that would be a small change to the existing ordinance right now, section one B. I should say the existing draft, excuse me, this isn't on the books yet. Section one B says the certificate shall expire adam, automatically one year after issuance. We certainly could change that to a different number of years. Again, there would be a tracking challenge just because right now the best we've got is an outlet calendar alert. For those dates, but I, I mean, it, you know, we've got five years potentially to figure out a better system, right?
Is there any other structure that we annually. Charge to inspect, any garages, any sheds, any dog houses? Any barns, any, anything?
Unless there's something under the fire regulations that I don't know about.
So the only thing in McCandless that would require an annual inspection would be chicken coops?
Off the top of my head, yes. There's nothing else that I do annually on a permit basis.
That doesn't sound right. That doesn't sound reasonable.
To, you mean to, to just.
For it to be the only thing.
Yeah, yeah. Option two would be my recommendation just for the administrative, you know, considerations as well as again. Is that going to be the venue in which we catch those nuisances? Probably not.
Yeah, yeah. I think option one is excessive. So I would think option two would be. More reasonable. And we don't even do five year inspections on anyone's shed, do we, or anyone's.
No.
Porch or garage or anything?
Correct, once you've got a zoning permit.
And then so, but if anyone made any complaints, and of course you would respond to that.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be right.
Yep.
All right. I think, I think option two sounds. Reasonable.
I, I did want to call everyone's attention to, you know, whether it's one, two, or three, the, the base fee that we would be recommending at this time is fifty dollars for a chicken coop accessory structures permit. That's pretty much in line with some of our other accessory structures, for example, if you have a garage or a larger shed, that's fifty dollars for the review. Because our regulations do require partially in the zoning, partially in the property maintenance code section. Screening or fencing so that basically you can't see the coop from the street or from other neighbors. You would probably need to put up some sort of fence if you don't already have one. So the fifty dollar fee would actually be basically a discount on the garage shed type, larger accessory structures. And would also incorporate review of any fencing that was required, fence permits on their own are twenty five dollars. So essentially, if we could do that single accessory structure permit fee, which again, you know, that could be adopted in fee resolution for all the options. We would ultimately be giving a little bit of a discount for combining the review of those two.
And you're there already, looking at it anyway.
Oh, yeah, exactly, exactly, right, yeah, that, I mean, that would, it's, it's just easier than having to have somebody submit a separate fence permit and all of that.
Agreed, agreed, yeah. Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Smith?
Um, yeah, so for, for the, the second and third options, we're just looking at a one-time fee. And then essentially that permit is good in perpetuity?
As, as the suggested options are written, yes.
Is there a way, I mean, could, could we do an annual fee just without the inspection component? Just to make sure that the folks who have the chicken coops are invested in them? You know, so that it's, somebody doesn't start one, year one, give up on it in month eight. Halfway, but then they have kind of a, you know, we have to wait for a resident complaint on a nuisance for it, that kind of thing. You know, ki- kind of is an incentive to, like, it wouldn't have to be big because we wouldn't be reinspecting it, it would just be kind of an annual renewal. For the, for the license.
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of communities that I'm aware of that do something like that, it's definitely not unheard of. You can certainly bring, you know, the fee down because looking at the annual fee, when we were, you know, suggesting fifty dollars, that would still essentially be subsidizing some of the services for. The, the annual reinspection. Now, with an annual fee, there is still the administration, the determination of, do you want to have them all expire on the calendar year? Or do you want them to be on the individual date? And there's still the administrative challenges for, you know, having each one on the individual date. It would certainly cut down on the administration of the annual inspections, which is probably the biggest staff time challenge. But I, I would need to take suggestions for what exactly that annual fee might, might be.
And would that be something that could be done through the fee schedules as opposed, so if we adopted something tonight? And it said whatever it said, and then we decided, okay, we want, you know, we want there to be an annual renewal fee but not inspections. Would that be something that we could just do through kind of the fee schedules or would, would that require more public hearing and a whole ordinance amendment?
Well, so for, since we're specifically talking about the General Offenses and Nuisances Code. There's a little bit of a different requirement for the different types of ordinances, zoning ordinances have the most stringent public hearing and passage procedures. So we've had at least a couple of public hearings now on the zoning portion. Of course, they've been duly advertised that they were being considered tonight. However, the public nuisance piece of the ordinances, that's what we consider, I believe, a class C ordinance under our town charter. Which means that you only have to put out there a notice of intent to adopt, you don't have to have a full public hearing, you know, if there's an edit to the ordinance. And I wouldn't consider these certificate approval edits to be really material changes unless the town attorney. And I wouldn't consider these certificate approval edits to be really material changes unless the town attorney has a different opinion.
No, I I think they're fine. If we're removing, it'd be different if we were adding.
Yeah, so so no, essentially no new regulation would be added through any of the options we're discussing. It would either be relaxing the, you know, the inspection frequency or, you know, removing the annual inspection. That would still require some minor edits to the draft. But again, unless the town attorney has any issues, I think it would be fine to make a motion to, you know, incorporate whatever amendments the group felt appropriate to the draft.
Councilmember Woods?
RJ, the fifty dollars that you mentioned, if we went with option two, does that cover the administrative costs without any subsidy?
Essentially, I mean, it 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 always depends on, you know, precisely the individual applications. But yeah, that's, I I've got there ballparked about an hour and a half of staff time per permit to process, review, issue the actual permit. Again, just depending on the exact staff members that get their hands on that, that pretty much should cover, you know, the the actual administrative cost and no further.
Thank you.
The comments by council? I I would not support an annual, it would amount to a chicken tax if you weren't inspecting it to just charge people every year fifty dollars to have chickens. I I I don't, I think inspection, whatever the inspection costs should be what the charge is initially to make sure that they're compliant with the chicken runs and the setbacks and all those things. But I wouldn't support just an annual chicken charge for no work. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I mean, I I, to be honest with you, I can't even believe that I was the one who who brought that up because that's so. So so really, what my what my thought more was was to use it as tracking. And so could we even do it where you have to renew it, but there's not a fee? You just have to file something to say, yes, I want to continue having chickens, essentially.
We're using staff time. If we're using staff time, we need to compensate for that.
Yeah.
We don't have any other zoning permits or things like that that are really no charge.
We have to kind of treat everything fairly and the same.
Yeah, because I I was just thinking of it more as like a tracking mechanism and a, oh, we see that this house had a coop last year and they didn't file for one again this year. You know, maybe somebody should just take a drive out in the next six months to see if it's falling apart or something like that. Not not from a raising money perspective. It was more just as a is as a tracking mechanism because we don't really have a good tracking mechanism at this point.
Any other comments from council members? So RJ, first, we would need to say which one of these options we wanted and then put that in this first one.
Yeah, it would it would need to be addressed with the vote on the first motion. Mr. Corbin, I defer to you for how they should make the motion or?
Yeah, I mean, I I think the motion is written.
Yeah.
Here.
You just say option, option one, two, or three?
We would, I think we would, we would need to, do they need to incorporate the fact that there would be a couple of edits to this draft if they were to go with option two?
Yeah, that's what I would say, like, whichever option, then let's, I can help formulate the motion at that point and that somebody can follow on if there's a consensus as to the option that council would like to proceed with.
So I think I would like to call for a motion. If there is a motion for this ordinance fifteen fourteen with option, and you would say option one, option two, or option three, and then our councilor is going to tell us what to do next. So do I, is there a motion? Councilmember Smith?
Oh, oh wait, I got to get the language for the motion in the first place. Okay, so, oh, okay.
Just option one, two, or three?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't move for option two. I, my motion would be for option two.
Do you need to tell us anything before we?
No.
Is there a second?
Right.
For option two? And option two is the, Councilmember Clunin?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Clunin, and that is the option of the one-time fifty dollar charge?
If you don't mind, I probably should mention for the public benefit because we kind of glazed over it. But option three still has the same charges as option two, it would just be not posting the certificate of approval on your coop. So, okay.
So I I'll, let me just clarify, you're not voting on the actual fee for the certificate tonight. That will be created through a fee resolution that will be passed later. So you're not, so that that'll come from the administration. They'll make a recommendation once they sharpen their pencils as to what the fee is. But we're basically voting on an option two is removing the language in the draft ordinance that requires the annual renewal process and fee. So there will just be one single fee for your setup of the, your chicken coop, for lack of a better term.
But we're not saying what that is tonight yet.
You will vote later?
Later.
On an amended or restated fee resolution.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Smith, do you still make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Clunin, do you still second that motion?
Yes.
All right. Is there any comments or questions from any council? Councilmember Spahnholz?
I'm still somewhat confused or saying it's pointing the cart for the horse to be talking about what we're going to charge for it if we haven't even taken a vote and whether we want chickens in the first place.
Well.
That's correct. What we're asking for now is a motion to amend the draft ordinance essentially to remove the annual certificate. If you were to vote one way or the other on the motion is drafted, we would have to amend it later is what my advice is because we can pull sections out, but we can't add to the ordinance tonight.
If you just don't want chickens, just say no to the whole thing. Because it's not just this little part, it's the whole, it's the whole thing with this part.
Is it more, what you're asking, should we look at the zoning one first and then this one second?
That's, it just seems to me that that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, because if you don't have the zoning, then you don't care.
You don't care what you're doing.
I kind of see.
It becomes moot.
I mean, that's how it was put on the agenda. I thought.
That that was, honestly, that was just how it was provided for the advertisement, which, I mean, I I think there are definitely things that you want to take a look at in tandem. It would make sense to vote the same way on both of them, probably.
I think it's a valid point, and if you wanted to consider the zoning side first and someone could withdraw the motion or move someone to the table because there's been a motion on the second.
A quick question. Is 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 there any similar provision to this fee in the zoning code? Because if not, in the zoning code part of the ordinance, because because if not, I would agree. I would say let's do the zoning code first because then we know whether or not we need to deal with the with the fee issue.
The, well, so the the fees would be essentially, and and again, just to be clear, the what's in the information in your packet, those are just suggested user fees based on the actual staff time and administrative costs. By no means are they a guarantee at this point. And that's certainly something that will be voted on by council ultimately in the fee schedule resolution update. If there is a zone, if the zoning component is passed, you know, whether or not the other one is passed, there would still need to be a building and zoning permit. I mean, I guess you could issue them for free, but that wouldn't be in keeping with the way that we handle other building and zoning permits. So essentially with both pieces, there is a fee component with the certificate of approval nuisance ordinance portion, which is what's on the table at the moment. There would be a certificate of approval annual renewal fee that would need to be discussed in the fee resolution.
We're talking about something different.
There, you would need a zoning permit, right? Because under the zoning ordinance, you're going to inspect for compliance with the zoning ordinance, and there's a permit fee for that. Then secondarily, under the the animal regulation, the nuisance regulation, there would be a certificate of compliance for the provisions of that portion of the ordinance. And both would be one-time fees.
Well.
And if we would amend the second one, the animal ordinance.
The, so the certificate of compliance, that one would be the annual fee, not one time. Well, I mean, I suppose.
Based on the discussion, correct. I mean, based on the discussion, we were talking about a one-time under the Mr. Smith's motion.
Oh, I I see what you're saying.
Two. But as drafted, it would require an annual certificate of compliance, right?
Right, right. Option two would be the single one-time fee recommended.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is because option two requires an amendment to alter the language of the of the motion as or of the draft ordinance as written, if we can table that and decide the zoning motion first, I would agree with council members Spahnholz and Tarl to to do that first so that we don't even have to go down the fee schedule. You know, whether it's an annual or one-time fee, we don't even have to discuss that until after we know if chickens are even going to be allowed, I guess.
A little late for that. We've already done it. A little late.
Somebody could make a motion to table it, but it can't be Mr. Smith or Ms. Quill.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm going to leave with the motion.
All right. Sorry, I I don't think you have to have a second for a table.
You do have to have a second, but they're not, the motion table is not debatable, so there should be a vote immediately.
There's, it's not debatable?
A motion to table was.
All those in favor tabling this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, tabled.
Did we get a second for the tabling?
Yes. Mr. Tarl?
If we are moving on to the zoning portion, I'm happy to answer any questions about that one. Councilmember Tarl?
It's currently written as a fifty-foot setback from the side yard?
Yes, from from all.
From all, from all. So this is not an exact science?
Yeah.
What percentage of households would roughly be allowed to have coops with that fifty-foot setback?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'll be honest.
Over the range? A third, a half?
A half would be extremely generous.
Okay, and if it was a hundred foot, how much would that?
Pretty much you'd have to have an estate lot.
A more rural piece of property?
Yes, yes. Correct.
Councilmember Woods? Madam President, this is a question for the town attorney. At this point, if we were to change the setback distance, does that put us right back into having to re-advertise and do another public hearing for this?
It does.
It absolutely would.
We start over, all the way over.
Was there another comment? I thought I saw another hand.
I have a question.
Councilmember Spahnholz?
RJ? I think I know the answer to it.
Okay.
It was my opinion, it continues to be my opinion, that we say that people want chickens in McCandless. And what I've seen in writing is a group of forty-five people, twenty-nine who wanted chickens and sixteen didn't. And then another survey, and I think McCandless or me and me.
Me, yeah, both were on.
The spotting
Right.
of the chickens. And I still, I have to say that I, we have worked so hard on this as a council to try to find a happy median to what's right for our town. But I remain concerned that we have a town of thirty thousand-ish people. And I don't, I I I, from the conversations I have, people I talk to don't want chickens.
Yeah, so.
And so I, do we have anything? No, that's my question. I said this months ago. Do we, do we have any better information that really, I mean, forty-five people in a town of our size is not a great indicator of who wants what in our town?
Yeah, so I I mean, I I will say most of the information technically statistically is anecdotal. It's about three hundred and sixty people for a statistically representative sample of a town of our size. So unless we pull about three hundred and fifty survey respondents, we're not going to get a statistically representative sample on most things that we put on, you know, McCandless and me or any other public engagement site.
But, you know, so there is no further more scientific, more statistically relevant information than forty-five people.
Without running an actual statistical model with demographics, I can't give a scientific result for that, for sure. The anecdotal things that I can think of is, you know, there have definitely been people that have expressed concerns about noise, about odor, about whether or not chickens are even a thing that we should have in McCandless. I'll throw out there, roosters are banned in this ordinance, so we at least would not be having those if this was passed. That said, I've also had some people call me and basically say, if this chicken thing doesn't pass, I'm no longer interested in moving to McCandless. And so can you tell me if I can have chickens at my house? So definitely, there there are a range of opinions on the whole backyard chicken thing. I don't make a recommendation for or against, you know, this is just kind of what we came up with through the process.
And I will say, I do have one more comment, and then as I read the information that you provided for, which I thought was very well thought out, by the way.
Thanks.
I agree with the gentle Mr. Mark Marple. I agree with the comments he made earlier tonight about concern. And this is not about our enforcement effort is the town is doing the best that it can. And unless we have, by the way, unless we have neighbors who are willing to report things, no, we certainly don't have enforcement staff capable of going and finding proactively issues. And I totally agree with President Zachary that we don't want to create a chicken tax. However, I do see that there are some real challenges. If we don't have maybe adequate staff today to do all the things we would love to do to enforce our ordinances, then, you know, and and this could be a tricky one. And because of the administrative staff time, we don't want to spend, you know, nor I think we want you to spend, you and your staff spend innumerable hours on paperwork administratively or going out and looking at chicken coops. But I don't know how else to, it's all along, we've talked about how to properly do this in a way that wasn't going to create the nuisance that many residents are concerned about. So I'm just going on record as saying I'm concerned about the fact that we're, obviously, we're not going to get back the money. We're not, this program is not going to pay for itself, one. And two, unless somebody wants to raise taxes to hire more enforcement officials, then, you know, we're not going to have the capability to enforce the way this perhaps should be enforced.
Yeah, I I will say, I mean, especially the annual inspections, I think that's a staffing challenge for sure. I think it's it's a little more easy to stomach when it's not the annual inspections, but that is something that, you know, I I recall through the process, that was something that was important to you especially. So, you know, there there are definitely trade-offs to each to each version of enforcement. The certificate of approval thing is tough because it's good to see posted on that coop, you know, that sort of encourages responsible animal ownership. At the same time, if you have your coop screened correctly as per the zoning ordinance requires, probably won't be able to see that certificate from the street regardless. And code enforcement, of course, can only enforce things that they see from a public place or the street unless they're giving permission actively to enter a property. So it's so it's tough to catch things that are happening in the backyard in general without some sort of photographic documentation or things like that.
So are there any other council comments? So if we decided, and I'm going to take more comments. So if we'd said, you know what, we've just changed our mind, we're like done with chickens, we don't want to do chickens. I can call for the best way, because we went through a negative motion the other night and we're not doing that again. Okay, so that was a plan and commission. So what I would do, just to let everybody know, not that we're ready to call for motion right now unless somebody's ready to make a motion, that I would call for a motion to adopt it. And if there was no, if no one made the motion, it would die. Someone made the motion, didn't second it, it would die. Somebody made it and seconded it and it was voted down, it would die. So just letting you know that that's how this would go, if that's how you want it to go. So having said that, I want to open the floor for additional comments or a motion, depending on where you, where people feel we are. Any other comments? Council, and we are on, this is just the keeping of chickens. Are we allowing chickens or not chickens?
If no one else has a comment online, I think I'd be open to supporting a hundred-foot setback because it's a nice test case where the more rural, or you called it estate properties, that we could see how it goes. And then we could later adopt it, but at the fifty. where the more rural, or you called it estate properties, that we could see how it goes, and then we could later adopt it, but at the fifty, I can't accept that. I think it's too much, too soon, too, you know, too little enforcement, so.
I would rather kill the whole thing than to start over. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time on this, and I'm not real, I I I don't support starting over. Any other, any other comments? Councilmember Clunin.
I agree with President Zachary. I think this this needs to end here this evening. There has been many discussions, many professionals brought in, lots of research by RJ and many other individuals on this subject matter. We did, in fact, discuss the one hundred feet several, I'm not sure if it was last year before Councilmember Tarl came on board with us or not. But, you know, I also agree that I do not want to see this become a burden to our staff. We have a lot of things moving forward in McCandless, and I would hate for for the inspection of chickens to be a problem at the town level. But I do think we need to remind ourselves that out of the folks that say they want chickens, you know, it is a small number. You know, there's nothing saying that you have to have chickens either in this town. So you don't want them, your neighbor doesn't want them, your other neighbor doesn't want them, you don't have to have them. This is giving those property owners their right to have chickens if they want them with, you know, with reservation, with some rules, with some respecting of the neighbors involved. And I do think folks will self-report or report if there is a nuisance. I'm always surprised to see the number of Baxter complaints on our on our 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 charts every month. So I do hope that th- those folks who do decide if this does go through to have chickens will understand that this is you know, something that, like everything else, being a good neighbor is going to be the essential part of this success of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Smith.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I agree with Councilmember Clunin. You know, just my general view of things is less restrictions, the better. That's, if you own your property, you own your property, and I know there has to be some restrictions, but that's just my general kind of view of it. And I know we did have a lot of discussion on on the on the setbacks, because I I was originally, you know, trying to push like a twenty-five or thirty-two or thirty-five foot setback, and that fifty was kind of a a number. You know, that took a long time to get to, but I understand anybody's reservations with it. I think, however, people are willing to decide. For me, at least, I I I think we just have to decide. The this thing's been going on for a couple of years, and I'll respect anybody's decision on it, whether it's a yea or nay. But I agree with with President Zachary that I think we just have to decide and put it to bed, one way or another. Either it's going to happen or it's not, and it's already dragged out for two years. Whatever the answer is, let's just give our citizens the answer.
Are you making a motion, Councilmember Smith?
With that in mind, as long as I'm not stepping on anybody else's toes for more comments, I would move to adopt ordinance number one five one five, an ordinance of the town of McCandless County, the town of McCandless, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the codified ordinances of the town of McCandless at part thirteen zoning code to regulate the keeping of chickens.
Is there a second? Second? All right. Last chance for this comment or discussion before this vote. All right, all those in favor of the keeping of chickens in McCandless indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Nay.
Word four.
Aye.
Word five.
Aye.
Word six.
Aye.
Word seven.
Aye.
Word one.
Nay.
Motion passes.
All right, now we are, oh. Do I have to get a motion to untable?
Well.
De-table?
Two options, you could do that, or you could, we could discuss the revisions and come back in two weeks.
I I would ask for advice as to when we should start issuing chicken permits if we don't do the nuisance ordinance portion this time, because that has some of the aesthetic standards for the zoning side.
I I think what our solicitor may be suggesting is that a little more time to look at this. We had it a couple of days. Sure, yeah, absolutely. And there would be no issuing of anything until this was in place. Correct. So. Got my merchant orders on that. Okay, okay. Yeah. And then, how about we leave this tabled and put it back on the next meeting?
Seven twenty-six.
Seven twenty-six. Head nods for that? Okay, good, we can talk about this some more. Okay, good. All right. So the A and O business is tabled till next meeting, B passed, and now we are to C. RJ, are you going to handle that? Is that you?
Uh, well, I think that we have a couple of people from the applicants group here. Didn't really have anything additional to add to the last discussion. I think that everyone still has everything in their packet.
Right. Okay.
So.
We, well, we we had the letter, we've had the presentation. Okay, so is there any questions about this? Okay.
Oh.
Okay, is there a motion? Councilmember Smith, I'm sorry?
Oh, I was, I was just going to ask, you know, we've heard about the slope there and and things like that. Have, has anyone gone out to to physically look at it? I've been out of town, I haven't been able to.
I have, I've walked it.
And how?
Councilmember Woods says, Councilmember Spahnholz has.
Okay, so I'd just like to hear whatever, either, you know, whatever your impressions are, or you know, if it's obvious in in the discussion we'll have, then then it will be the so, just because I haven't been able to look at it myself, I'm just trying to get a a good mental picture of, you know, is is it really a kind of impossible and pointless to do, or or is there going to be utility in the future if we can connect it?
The engineers, I think, did address that in their letter about the slope and about the ability to put a sidewalk there. I can't, I'm trying to find my document to pull it up.
Yeah, because the, I saw that the engineer said the topography along the roadway is very steep and no other sidewalks currently exist. But that was kind of the extent of it. I I think, maybe I missed something else.
Typically, the engineers don't make recommendations, yea or nay, on the modifications, just state the facts.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, I wouldn't want somebody to have to build a sidewalk that really is to nowhere. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, would it really be a sidewalk to nowhere? That's my, you know, that's just my concern, is the sidewalks are important. If it's going to end up being pointless, no matter what happens, then I would would hate to require it, but if it could be connected, because, you know, we we want to have the connection. If it's feasible and it could be done, then I would prefer it be done.
Other than Councilmember Swiger.
I was just, I would like to point out that I've noticed in years past, just for example, there was two properties on La Grande Drive, one that had not been developed, it's being developed right now, and it's had been over twenty-eight years where there was land, sidewalks that went to that land had not been developed, but now there's finally a sidewalk to somewhere instead of nowhere, so you know, that's common throughout the town where you'll see a sidewalk, but eventually a sidewalk could be built, you know, connecting to wherever that might go. And I've I've definitely seen in other situations where people, you know, again, there's no sidewalk, but eventually a sidewalk will be built, and we can't just think of the right now, but down the future, and what our goal is, you know, for the town and connectivity and in my opinion, I I feel that a sidewalk should be there. That's it.
All right. If there aren't, of course, we have another chance for comments, is there a motion to approve or deny this modification of pole construction? I'll make a motion. Councilmember Spahnholz.
I move to deny the modification request of pole construction LLC to waive the requirements to install sidewalk in accordance with section one three, one three point one seven of the Town Code of Ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Swiger. Okay, any other, any additional comments?
Can a sidewalk truly be built there?
They engineered it. Yeah.
They just don't want to pay for it.
Any other, any other additional comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of denying denying the modification for a sidewalk, which means there will be a sidewalk, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Madam President, I I abstained, just because I didn't want to vote without having looked at it, so I just wanted to note that I abstained on that.
Is that a reason to abstain?
You could abstain for any reason.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, the second modification that is requested is a modification for a three-to-one slope to a two-to-one slope. There any comments or questions on this?
I would comment that I think that's a reasonable request based upon the the review of our our town engineer and the geotechnical work that was provided.
I would agree with Councilmember Spahnholz. Any other comments? Okay. Would someone like to, I'm calling for a motion. Councilmember Clunin.
Move to approve the modification request for Pole Construction LLC for a modification of the fill slope grading requirement under section one seven zero five point zero five A of the Town Code of Ordinances from a minimum of three to one slope to two to one slope.
Second.
Okay. Chance for comments, again. All right, all those in favor of granting this, approving this modification from a three-to-one slope to a two-to-one slope, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, last is for the application for the land development of Thompson Run Road. Those were the, we voted on the modifications first, and then this would be the plan with the modification that was granted and with the one that was denied, correct, RJ?
So because they will need to engineer the retaining walls for the sidewalk, we actually don't have enough information to approve the development tonight, because anything over six feet requires a variance from the zoning court.
We would recommend, staff would recommend tabled.
Yes.
This item until the additional work is completed.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I need a motion to table.
Would you like me to make the motion to table it, the application for the pole construction LLC?
I think it would be fine for Mr. Paul to come to speak.
Don Poole, the developer of eighty-five-hundred Thompson Run Road. I just heard that one councilwoman say, we don't want to build it because of the cost. And it can be built, so why can't we approve the plan contingent upon building the sidewalk? If your engineer says it can be done, and your council people say it can be done, why can it not be approved tonight with that contingency?
It seems like, well, I think you have to get a variance, so we could make it pending the approval of the variance for the zoning hearing board.
If we don't get the variance, then we don't build the project?
I don't know how that works.
Well, if council conditioned the approval on you receiving your variances and you didn't receive it, then you wouldn't have an approval to move forward, and you'd have to come back. My understanding is we have an extension of time.
Yes, we're, we're okay.
So, yeah, so.
No, we're, we're okay. Okay, thank you.
Don. May as well stay up because you may want to address this. The council could go ahead and move forward with the approval knowing that we didn't, did not approve the waiver, he would be required to build the sidewalk, it would be.
Yes.
So it would be whatever he needed to do then to.
Right, and if he was unable to obtain a variance to get it, then we would, it would come back to council to address in some fashion or not.
But in that case, because I don't think it's anyone's desire to hold Mr. Poole up any longer than necessary, that if it was hypothetically, we made a motion and council approved his development subject to the sidewalk and any variances that were required related there too, then it would simply be an administrative matter once he acquired those things, and it would never have to come back to council.
Right.
And that's a question, that's not a statement.
That is correct, except in a situation where any of the conditions are not met.
Right.
Right, then that would have to come back, but if 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 Mr. Poole is able to construct the sidewalk, obtain any variances, et cetera, then council would never see it again, it would just be handled administratively.
That's what I'm suggesting would be the most convenient way to proceed.
We would just vote it up or down without condition.
Now, if you voted it with conditions, it would, it would continue unless the conditions were met, and then it may come back to council. Otherwise, with the condition of constructing the sidewalk, obtaining the appropriate variance, et cetera, if the zoning hearing board grants the variance, then they just continue on, and we never see it. If the zoning hearing board were for some reason say no, then we'd have to come back here to the drawing board.
But I I agree with Mr.
Correct, all the typical.
Okay, that's another question I have. Hasn't the engineer already approved this, saying that the sidewalk can be built? We 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 had provided, we had provided cross-sections, heights of walls, the width of the sidewalk, with our engineer provided all that information to the town several months ago, and I know it was reviewed by Gateway. Did they not comment saying that that was possible, or? There's a, I believe there was a letter.
They commented that that was part of their review.
They commented that the modification request was part of the review. Anytime somebody doesn't put something on their plan or there is enough to trigger a modification request, they know the modification request and any details they might have to add.
They had noted the revised sidewalk plan.
Yes.
Well, they they noted the request for the I can go back and check.
Your June twenty-ninth letter indicates.
I'd like to have a copy of that letter.
They had.
I believe I do.
I I I think Mr. Poole has a a very good point, and that is, if we are entertaining, my understanding is that our engineers said that, yes, the sidewalk that with the wall, the sidewalk could be built there, because we certainly wouldn't vote for a sidewalk to be put in a place where the engineers had said it was. because we certainly wouldn't vote for a sidewalk to be put in a place where the engineers had said it was impossible to go.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so I, I. Is, um, Dan's not on, is he?
No.
I believe, if I recollect correctly, that I think it was probably in his report that simply stated in reviewing the cross-sections that were provided, that the height of the walls required to construct would require further approvals. And that's what I think, I think that's the only real comment that our town engineer made. It wasn't a recommend or can't do, it was yes, can do it, but pointing out that.
That's how I understood that.
Yeah. Yes, it could be done, but it would require this and variants.
Well, before, before we keep throwing money at this project, a question for council. So if for some reason we don't get a variance to build these six-foot or seven-foot high walls, wherever they are, is then this project dead in the water? Or is it not going to be approved?
That's premature and speculative. I mean, that's something that council have to consider if those facts are presented to it.
Development for seven.
But we're only, we're only, council's only considering what's in front of it. And you're, you're putting forth a speculative issue.
It's one item.
But they're, they're not here to vote.
Okay.
I think, I guess what you're saying, like, the town is saying on one side of the mouth, you can go ahead and do it, but the other side says, well, but you might not be able to if you don't get this. So it's like, half of us are saying, build the sidewalk, and the other, another committee might say, don't build the sidewalk because the wall's too high. So and then you're like, well, what do I do? I just want to build my development.
Correct.
Sort of encompassing what you're asking. Yes.
It does all come back to council though.
Yes.
Ultimately.
So if, if he, he would have to go in front of the, the.
Zoning hearing board.
Zoning hearing board. For the wall height variance.
If they said no.
Then we'll come back to council.
And we could override that, or we could.
Well.
Not the zoning hearing board.
You can't override it.
But we can say, no.
You could.
Don't put in the sidewalk.
A modification, you could reconsider the modification and maybe grant a different modification than is being requested, or not at all. So it, it ultimately will come back to council if the variance is not granted. Because that will be a condition of approval, that they obtain a variance, they comply with the engineer's review letter, they comply with the engineer's review of the, of the wall once it's engineered.
So. Question?
What? What if we could modify the height of the wall to keep it under six feet?
You wouldn't need a variance then, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, we could show, I mean, but either way.
Gateway would have to okay that.
Council wants a sidewalk. You know, we're agreeing to put a sidewalk in, standing here right now, we'll put a sidewalk in it, whatever cost, I guess. But, you know, we need to move forward with the project or let it die. And there, my engineer just told me there is a possibility that we could build a wall under six feet to make that work by grading the hillside back a little further.
Then I, it seems like we could pass this, we could vote on this tonight, Ben.
Yep. With the same conditions and, right? And everything will be administrative, and if there's a snafu, it'll come back to council. Otherwise, it'll just proceed.
So quick question?
Councilmember Smith?
So if, if, if they can go and design a sidewalk with a, with a wall less than six feet tall, they still have to get Gateway's review, but there's no further variance, no further anything. So if we vote on it tonight, they can just move forward.
Right.
If they need a wall that's higher, they have to go to the zoning board to, to either get the variance or have it rejected, in which case they come back before us. But it, it sounds like the most expedient thing would be to, to vote on it tonight, whether they can move forward. And then if they can do it without the variance, there's no more hurdles to get over. And if they still need the variance, then, you know, they know what they're, they know what they need to do.
Then it's pending approval of the variance.
Right. Well, I, I don't even think the way we do it, we wouldn't even have, oh, I guess, well, no, we would just have to, to vote whether to approve it just without having that. I don't even think we'd have to mention a potential variance in our vote at all, would we?
No, you wouldn't. You would just say conditioned upon, you know, Gateway's review of the sidewalk and any related pertinences such as the wall and, and our traditional review letters and other conditions we place on all of our land development approvals. And that's basically the motion at that point. So I think I just made.
We have a second.
So moved.
With someone, okay, so Councilmember Smith, you are moving, making that motion?
Yes. And I will, I will take council attorney's wording. Yep, as long as it works, that's good.
Councilmember Woods, was that a second I saw, or did you have a comment?
No, that's a second. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Additional comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All those of, for approving, this is for approval of this development with all of the stipulations worded by our attorney, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Paul. All right, new business. We are appointing some new committee members. And the way we do this is we have a nominating committee who performs the interviews and makes a recommendation for the appointments. Council has reviewed the applications and also the interviews, which records all council members can, can, can see all the applicants. So the, the chair of the nominating committee, when I call for nominations, can say that we nominate this person, but anyone in council can also, you know, nominate someone else. So we're not locked into that person, just to let you know that this was just a method that we developed to help move our, our interviews along. So the chair of the Heritage Center Nominating Committee would be Councilmember Smith. So would you like to make a motion for that appointment?
Yes. So we interviewed Donald Faulkner. He applied for the open position. He's actually one of the original volunteers for the Heritage Center. And so I would move to appoint Donald Faulkner Jr. to the F D P C Heritage Center for a term to expire 12/31/25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Clunin? Okay. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Faulkner. All right, the next is the Technology Advisory Committee. The chair of that, the next three are from the Technology Advisory Committee. And the chair of that is Councilmember Woods. So I'm calling for nomination for the first position.
Okay, just want to point out a couple of things. We had six applicants for these three positions. One of them is to complete the unexpired term of Scott Schiffkin, who resigned from the committee. We started off with three applicants for that position. When we realized that the other two were expiring pretty soon after, we decided to open up the interviews for, you consider all six applicants for three positions. So we, they all had a chance to, to get on the committee. So with that being said, this is also going to be a little bit of a complicated one for our town attorney. The first nomination I'd like to make is for Lamar Williams. This is, I want to start this as a question for the town attorney, just to make sure I do it right. Lamar Williams is currently on the planning commission.
Yes.
He has indicated that he is, he understands that he cannot serve through committee and a commission at the same time. So this would have to be conditional on his resignation from the planning commission. So could I just make a motion to appoint him conditional on that?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So therefore, I would make a motion to appoint Lamar Williams to the Technology Advisory Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2023, conditional on his resignation from the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Okay. Comments from any council member? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm abstaining because I, he's on the planning commission and I feel like I need to abstain.
Okay. The next one is for a four-year term, so I make a motion to appoint Michael Arant to the Technology Advisory Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any comments? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And for the third seat, and make a motion to appoint Marcy Pearson to the Technology Advisory Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Um, is there a second? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Congratulations to those three members. Is there any other new business? All right, hearing none. Council will meet an executive session in the council chambers to discuss personnel matters following adjournment of this meeting. There will be no further business conducted this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? So.
Second.
Okay. And I'll give Councilmember Woods, because they kind of did that together. All those in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.